Hello, I'm Chelmsford Town Manager Paul Cohen. And welcome to the 2018 Fall Annual Town Meeting Edition of the Town Managers Roundtable. This October 15th will be a meeting at the Senior Center to take up 23 items of business before the community. And many of them deal with zoning. And it really has been a hot topic during the last several weeks. So on our program today, I'm joined again by Colleen Stansfield, who actually works in the Community Development Planning Office professionally. And then Evan Belansky, our Community Development Director. So I guess we'll just sort of jump right into it, Evan. There are a number of zoning articles and we'll sort of start them in order in case people are following it. But Article 16 has to do with flags, amending the zoning bylaw for flags. And it's a pretty straightforward one and one which you work directly on. So if you could just give those and our audience just a synopsis of what's taking place with the article in light of the flag issue.
Sure. So in Chelmsford under zoning, the zoning bylaw, flags are considered a sign and they're defined as such. And the current zoning bylaw regulates the commercial promotion utilization of a flag. And over the summer, there were some, I guess, challenges with that regulation. And since the summertime, the town officials, including myself, have been working on identifying a community-based solution that would be appropriate based upon community values related to flags. And what has been proposed and voted in a positive recommendation by the planning board is to eliminate all regulation associated with the commercial promotion of a flag. And at the end of the day, what that will mean is that any business, commercial or otherwise, will be able to display flags of a governmental entity in any form or fashion, size, number and location at their desire.
So therefore, what took place last summer out at the corner of Golden Cove Road and Chelmsford Street would be allowed.
Correct.
Clearly. And then if a business wanted to do something promotion on St. Patrick's Day or Creek Independence Day, whatever, all those things would be allowed? There's no restrictions on official flags?
Correct. Yeah, flags of governmental entities and the like would be unrestricted.
Right.
It still provides a prohibition on gimmick-type flags.
Banners, which would more commonly...
Banners, streamers, balloons, inflatable types of objects that may have the flag on it would still be prohibited. This would allow, again, the display of traditional cloth and/or a similar material related to a governmental entity flag to be displayed.
How about the balls on sticks?
That's an example where current regulations would prohibit that.
Okay.
All right. So that's pretty straightforward and I think, again, it's a good resolution to what's happened. So let's go on to Article 17, which is probably the most noteworthy one. And this has to do with accessory animals to residential dwellings. And probably the easy thing to do is, let's explain what's allowed now. And I think what's allowed now is you have to have a 40,000-square-foot lot.
Right.
And there are setbacks even on that current zoning of the 50 feet from lot lines.
50 feet.
So that's sort of a nutshell of what's in place now. And what the planning board has voted as we are taping the show, and it could change because there are ongoing discussions with the Board of Health and the planning board, is to reduce that amount. And I'm going to ask you to describe what the reduction is. But I think what people want to understand is the genesis of this concept is the fact that in recent years, many people have taken to allowing housing chickens on property, the idea of farm-fresh eggs and so forth. And so the reality has been is that people have been housing chickens on less than an acre or 40,000-square-foot property. And so I think that as that being the genesis of this, we now have the planning board bringing forth an article. And I'll sort of ask you to describe what's being proposed right now.
Sure. So the planning board has held their public hearing and they've voted a positive recommendation for purposes of small animals, including chickens and other game birds, specifically to reduce the existing 40,000 minimum lot area down to, well, it's a two-step process. For the first 10 animals, there is no minimum lot area. And then if you have more than 10, the minimum lot area starts at 15,000 and then increases by 1,500 square feet for each additional small animal, chicken or game bird.
Right. But the initial one, though, you have to have the setback. So even though there's no minimum lot area, you still practically need about 15,000 square feet to...
10 to 15 have been the numbers. And then that plays into some of the methodology as to why planning board members in the board are proposing what they voted on. As you indicated, that conversation is still evolving. This evening, the planning board and the Board of Health are holding a joint meeting in preparation of town meeting to further discuss some of the details and hopefully iron out some discrepancies.
Right. And then obviously, the opposition is due to the fact of the sanitary concerns that when any type of animal, you know, if you're having feed and so forth outside, then it does attract rodents if they're not properly managed and cared for. I think that's sort of a nutshell of what it is.
Do we have any sort of a regulation that requires them to be inspected at periodic times? Or is it only when there's a complaint?
So the Board of Health does have a permit process.
Right.
Under their regulations. And my understanding is that once a permit is issued, that gives the town the authority to re-inspector.
And they do an annual inspection.
An annual inspection.
Right. And then obviously, they'll respond, as Evan said, if there's a concern raised. But basically, again, the planning board's role and the building commissioner is the zoning aspect, which is the size lot. The care and treatment of the animals is a separate permit from the Board of Health.
Correct.
And the idea was to have those in sync. And that's thus far...
Because right now, they're not.
Right. Well, thus far, the Board of Health regulations do mirror the 40,000 zoning requirement.
They do.
And now that's what the question is, and that's why there is this kind of discussion between the planning board and Board of Health of what should the minimum size be, if it should change at all. The other thing to note in the bylaw that isn't in there that is new is they would not allow roosters on a parcel less than two and a half acres.
Correct.
And so if this thing gets jettisoned, then the roosters would still be allowed. And obviously, the issue with roosters is noise.
Right.
So it's an interesting conversation about, you know, whether it's a hobby, which I think many homeowners view it as a hobby.
Yeah.
And then what would be an appropriate number if it truly is a hobby.
Right.
And I think that some of that conversation will likely take place this evening. You know, again, as currently written, it's the first 10 can be allowed with no minimum lot area.
Right.
And so some folks have asked the question, well, if it's a hobby, is 10, you know, is that the right number if it truly is a hobby?
I had a woman in today that describes them as her pets. And she's on a small lot and is looking for relief to keep them there because she doesn't fit the zoning.
Right. And it's not always chickens either. It could be rabbits.
Right.
It could be other small animals.
Correct.
So, okay. All right. I think we pretty much exhausted that one and there's enough to follow. But let's go on to something that's more, in terms of volume of language, most significant is the historic preservation and reuse aspect of the zoning bylaw. Please explain to us what's being proposed and why.
Sure.
Because this one is long text.
Yeah. So this is, it's long in text, but the kind of the purpose and intent and the strategy is very precise. Chelmsford, as most people know, has a large number of historic structures, historic neighborhoods, primarily single-family structures. And the town has made it very clear via its master plans, its historic and cultural plan, that it wants to promote its historic character and in doing so, saving the historic structures. So what this bylaw is attempting to do is provide the first zoning tools that the town would have to incentivize and promote and encourage preservation of historic structures or the reuse of historic structures. So as I indicated, it's in accordance with the 2010 master plan as well as the 2013 historic and cultural preservation plan. The Chelmsford Historical Commission has voted to support this article. And essentially, it allows for some flexibility related to how historic structures can be used. So currently, most of them are single-family, some of them are two-family. This bylaw says that you can convert a single-family to a two-family and it provides a new opportunity for conversion to a three-family. In addition, it also provides a provision where if you have excess land associated with a historic structure via special permit process with the planning board, you can create a new buildable lot as a means of providing financial incentive to then historically restore the existing historic structure. So it's fairly comprehensive. It provides new tools for the planning board and the historical commission as well as the historic district commission if they so choose. And it's somewhat ahead of its time in the sense that we don't have a lot of demolition of historic structures in town. But I think the planning board and the historical commission are getting ahead of the curve, which is kind of what's going on in Newton and Wellesley, where, you know, entire neighborhoods of historic structures are being demolished due to market demand and pressure.
So with excess land, how big of a lot would they be allowed?
So the bylaw requires that it can be no less than 50% of the required minimum lot area.
So 20,000 square foot?
So in the RB would be 20,000, in the RC would be...
10,000.
10,000, which is a more...
And the few RA that we have, it would be 30,000.
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
And does this bylaw exist in other communities or is it considered...
Yeah. The planning board members did do some research. They polled other bylaws that do exist. I think Andover was one community. I think Concord was another community.
So they're showing to be successful or having the desired outcome in those places?
It's successful when a, you know, obviously, it's case-specific and it really comes down to the owner or the developer. In Chelmsford, we have a lot of flipping, house-flipping activity. And increasingly, as Colleen knows, historic structures are being sold. So this provides an additional tool. Fortunately, in Chelmsford, I think a lot of people move to historic houses because they want to live in a historic house. They enjoy that. So I don't think, we haven't had the push for demolition.
Well, currently now, we have a conversion to a two-family if you are prior to zoning in 1938.
Correct.
So does this go on from that? I mean, there's certain requirements that you have to meet, but it's almost a finding of fact rather than a special permit.
So this continues that. It mirrors and continues that special permit provision. It converts it from the zoning board to the planning board.
Okay.
Which makes some sense because the planning board via this bylaw could also work with the applicant property owner to find other solutions beyond a two-family. And it's primarily financially driven, as you know. Maintaining and owning a historic structure is very expensive. They're fairly large in size and they're not very conducive to a single-family living situation. So many of them are being converted to two-families.
We also have the 75 years creates the historic house. So there's a lot more of those that are going to be coming in to that definition.
Agreed. And that may be something that the town, particularly the historical commission, may need to look at at some point in the future.
Because now it's after World War II.
Yeah, exactly.
Right. Yeah, it's not as historic as we consider.
Exactly. And I'm not sure that was the spirit or intent of, you know, a 75-year demolition delay.
Right, right.
But when we get to that point, we'll have to discuss that.
When Campanelli Ranches become historic...
Exactly. I can see that being somewhat problematic.
Okay. Article 19 is a definition article. You're revising or updating the definition of dwelling. Just to sort of explain what's happening here under this article. It's a very, this one's sort of known by its brevity as opposed to the previous article.
Yes.
They have to do with multifamily dwellings.
Yeah. So the zoning bylaw currently defines the term dwelling.
Yeah.
And within it, it defines what a single-family dwelling is, what a two-family dwelling is, and what a multifamily dwelling is. And so the current definition of multifamily is a structure that contains three or more dwelling units. So it's one structure with three dwelling units contained inside that single structure. What this proposal is doing is providing a new definition or an extension of the multifamily definition to say that not only can it include three dwelling units within one structure, but you could have three detached individual dwelling units on one lot, three or more on one lot. And at the end of the day, what that will do is it will allow detached townhouse ownership style multifamily developments rather than requiring central corridor apartment-style buildings that are typically rental. So it will diversify the housing stock as time has gone on with 40B and so forth. There appears to be a community interest in having ownership-style housing as a preference over rental. And at this point, the market seems to be, you know, shifting in that direction as well.
It ends up being a higher-quality unit, I think, too.
Yeah, we've heard that with the planning board.
Yeah, we've seen a few of these come forward, which is where the genesis of this came from. You know, would you rather have, I mean, in RM zoning, you could only have the three-family or more.
Correct.
So this allows for RM zoning to have single units or duplexes.
Correct, correct. And so it provides flexibility to the, you know, to the planning board to work with the developer to come up with a solution that's best for the neighborhood.
Right.
Okay. So, yeah, so basically, you're allowing multiple structures on a property.
On a lot, which is not allowed.
Whereas if a lot was limited to one or duplex or duplex.
One structure with multiple units within it.
And specifically, three. You know, where people came in with duplexes, they were told it doesn't fit the definition.
So if you were to drive around town, it's tough to find a detached townhouse development. The ones that we do have in town, many of, a number of them are 40B-type developments.
Cuesta y Lane?
Yeah, yep. Windermere, I think, is detached.
Right.
That was a 40B.
What about Stonegate? We're not quite sure, but that's, would allow Stonegate.
Yeah, exactly. Would allow something very similar to Stonegate, detached, single-family townhouses.
Which are worth quite a bit.
Yeah, absolutely.
Very desirable.
Absolutely, yep.
So it's on these larger types of, it's not somebody's going to take a buildable lot and put three structures on it?
Right, right.
Right, or duplex without that.
Right.
Okay. Moving on to what's the final zoning article on the Fall Annual Town Meeting warrant is an amendment to the Business Amendments Overlay District by sort of removing two parcels from the commercial exclusion zone over on Mill Road, 278 and 282 Mill Road. And this is, just to orient people, this basically is where the new apartments have been built, the Princeton Apartments over on the end of Mill Road. And right now, that's vacant land.
Correct.
And so if you could just sort of describe what's taking place.
Sure. So this public hearing opens this evening, 7:00 PM with the planning board. And this parcel back in 2016, as part of the Route 129 overlay district, was placed into the commercial exclusion zone, which essentially meant that it could only be used for multifamily for purposes of the overlay. It was the, basically, on the line of the two sub-districts, one that allowed commercial retail and the exclusion zone, which does not allow retail and commercial uses. So since 2016, the property has been vacant, it's been marketed actively. And about a month ago, the commercial broker as well as an interested developer expressed interest in building a small 5,600-square-foot retail, multi-tenanted, small retail restaurant building. So that requires a rezoning for purposes of taking those two parcels, one acre, out of the commercial exclusion zone and adding it to the commercial retail overlay.
This is right across where Life Links used to be until fairly recently.
Correct. So from a zoning perspective, it's not a text amendment, it's a map amendment, fairly straightforward in nature. I think a lot of the discussion will be about kind of the strategy and the original spirit and intent of the overlay, what the goals and objectives were and how this fits in with that, you know, with that original zoning strategy.
Right, great. We also have an accompanying warrant article zoning on a special town meeting warrant that will be taken up on the 18th of October, the second session, having to do with lot size definition. Want to sort of explain what's there because it's...
Yeah.
And we actually put all the text of the provision in the warrant, but just for...
Sure. So that hearing opens up October 10th. That's a, I guess that's an example of, you know, zoning in the weeds. It happens every once in a while where a real-world scenario unfolds and a clear deficiency is identified, one in which would be in the best interest to resolve. So this is what, this fits that scenario. Specifically, it has to do with slivers of land, small, narrow slivers of land that connect to larger areas of land and whether that sliver can be used for a lot area in connecting contiguous lot areas. Very technical in nature. What will likely be presented at the public hearings and town meeting will be a visual, a graphic or a drawing that can easily show what the deficiency is and how the amendment will close that loophole, so to speak.
Okay, great.
Yeah, so for example, you could have a little sliver to a backyard behind something else, so.
Okay. That'd be good. All right. So that covers all the zoning articles. Now we're going to sort of shift a little bit more towards you, Colleen, because there are also general warrant articles that have to do with the town's general bylaws and as a resident of the town, long-term resident reaction. One is to ban single-use plastic bags in the community, which is for those who go shopping, whether you're at Market Basket or Hannaford's or Stop &amp; Shop or at Kohl's. It's the thin, you know, bags that you get at the checkout area.
Right.
Much like other communities such as Westford and City of Lowell and Tucksbury, I think, is taking it up as well, there's basically a prohibition of allowing that, you know, basically effective the start of July of 2019.
Right.
What's your reaction to that proposal?
It seems like it's the wave of the future. You know, I personally get paper bags every time I go. They stand up in my car better. That's my only reason.
They charge you for those?
No, they don't.
Because we've kind of gone full circle.
Yeah.
We were all younger, we had the paper bags at the basket, but then we were trying to save the forest, right? And they were expensive.
Right.
So then they went to the plastic white bags or small bags.
But you can recycle paper better.
But I think what they're really trying to do is get people to bring the recyclable bags to the stores.
Exactly, exactly.
And then the fabric cloth bags.
And I think what would happen is obviously, if you show up there, you're going to have the option of either, I guess, hand-carrying your groceries out or you could buy one of these heavier bags at the checkout.
Well, Market Basket does offer boxes. You can take the boxes. They're more than willing to let you have those.
Right, because of the difficulty with recycling, but that's another discussion. But there's another article following this and sort of stepping up is to ban, you know, polystyrene or styrofoam containers.
Right.
Like you'd get a takeout at a restaurant, you know, or a retail place like Dunkin' Donuts and so forth, the styrofoam containers.
Right, styrofoam cups.
And again, we've seen Westford do this. There's a couple other communities' reactions on...
Styrofoam's been known to be bad for a long time. I mean, why people are still using it, I don't know. But I heard the schools have been in front of this. That was a question you had brought up and I heard that at one of the recent meetings.
Yeah, that they're going towards greenware, as they call it.
Yeah.
Because obviously, the reason it's used, obviously, because of the expense. It's a low expense and you think of the volume, how many cups go out of a Dunkin' Donuts on a daily basis or a restaurant takeout, I want to take this out with me and, you know, they throw it in the container and seal the lid. And remember, years ago, when we used to go to McDonald's, that was all the burgers were in those styrofoam containers. And then years, quite sometimes, they went to the paper.
Right, right.
So that's what's taking place there. And then the final one, environmental, is plastic stirrers and straws.
Straws.
That would, it wouldn't prohibit the use of straws in restaurants, but it would prohibit the establishment from distributing straws. And it does exempt nursing care facilities and health and those type of issues. Reaction to straws and stirrers?
Well, as I was saying before this, a friend of mine gave me a metal straw last night with a little bendy on it.
Okay, like a silicon?
As a joke, you know. But, yeah, I don't know. I'm wondering how you clean those properly, but I did, I do have a question, though.
Sure.
I thought that you could still ask for the straws, but they're just not going to give them to you right away. Wasn't that said at the last selectments meeting?
No. My understanding was is that they would not distribute them, that, you know, they would not be issued.
Oh.
That was mentioned as an example as to what some restaurants are doing now.
Oh, they're doing it now?
That's what's happening now. You go to a restaurant, they'll often have a sign saying, "We don't, you know, we only provide straws upon request."
What happened to the old paper ones we used to have? We used to have paper straws, too.
I think the problem is they only last so long, you know, the paper ones. And I think, you know, because you used to get them at school.
But they're one-use.
Right, but...
So I thought the three presenters on Monday night did a fantastic job on this. I think they did get some, a number of recommendations that they did a nice job. But one item that I thought was interesting was, which really stuck with me, they had mentioned that when you're at home, you never use a straw.
Yeah.
That people just behaviorally, out of habit, drink right out of the cup. But when you go to a restaurant, it's almost expected that you drink out of a straw. So that really hit home with me, that it's very much a human behavior scenario as opposed to a necessity.
Right.
Yeah, it's sort of put in front of you and therefore, you use it, you know, in general cases.
Yeah, yeah.
So those are sort of the three general bylaw amendments. There are a few other things on the warrant. One is the, this proposal to reconstruct the Ninth Hall Green at the Chelmsford Country Club, using money that has been raised and restricted to use for the country club. You know, I think like anything else, the facility needs to be upgraded over time. And so far, that hasn't sort of had a lot of scrutiny or concerns. There's also an article having to do with easements because the town is moving forward with a state-funded project to reconstruct the intersection in front of the cemetery on Barica Road at Riveneck and Barica Road to make that a T-intersection. And so, again, with that development comes the issue of sidewalks and road openings and so forth. And so there, it's no financial aspect, but the town does need permission from the authority of town meeting to acquire temporary and permanent easements for that project. So that's another significant aspect of it. But Evan, there's also one for Vinyl Square. And I know you're on the Vinyl Square Committee, having to do with a field survey and portable tree planters. So want to talk about what's going on with the Vinyl Square aspect?
Yeah, so the Vinyl Square Committee's been meeting fairly routinely for the last three years. This concept has been in their master plan. It was reaffirmed based upon a community input session to revalidate their vision and goals and objectives. And so it's twofold. Short-term, there's an interest in getting some vertical greenery within the square to beautify it and kind of take the unsightliness off the wires and telephone poles. So that's a short-term aspect. However, in order to locate trees, you have to do it physically in the ground or a planter that sits on the sidewalk. On the, physically in the ground is a challenge. It's a lengthy permitting process with the state. The state owns the sidewalk and roadways as well as the underground utilities, things of that nature. So that's fairly expensive and complicated. So the thought was to pursue planters that would sit on the sidewalk, either seasonally or they could, over winter. That requires a small survey in order to get the state permit process approval. The survey itself is also being somewhat expanded to do a full square survey, which would position the town to pursue long-term beautification, streetscape improvements, drainage improvements, traffic, parking improvements in partnership with the state. So I think in total, it's a $25,000 request for the survey component, which will serve a short-term and a long-term purpose. And then there's a $10,000 request for the acquisition of the tree planters as well as the physical trees. Right now, we're working with the committee as well as the tree committee and DPW to work out a management plan as to how that would all unfold.
Okay, great. And there were a few other, we've got about a minute left in our program, a few other items left that people will be aware of. We are implementing the new federal requirements for stormwater management.
Stormwater, again, yeah.
So that will end up being voted into effect. There'll be a stormwater division of Public Works. Again, this is communities in Massachusetts as well as many other states across the country. Therefore, that will be, end up being a surcharge on sewer bills starting in January. We're also, the selectmen are requesting funding to do an ambulance study as well as fire station consolidation study. There's also funding to support the Chelmsford Center for the Arts, money to support the efforts of the volunteer efforts of the Chelmsford Open Space Stewards. So there's a lot on there. And again, we want to remind people, this town meeting is open to the whole public. Anybody can go and speak and address the body at town meeting. Again, it's October 15th, 7:00 PM at, 7:30 PM at the Senior Center, 7:00 PM. And then, again, anybody can come and speak and then your reps, if you have concerns, bring them to your town meeting rep. So thank you, Evan. Thank you, Colleen.
Thank you.